Well, I got one or dog. Now I got a dog first.
The meeting of the election board, Erie County Board of Elections is called the order.
Mr. Bale.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Drexel.
Here.
Mrs. Shourman.
Here.
Mr. Scatella.
Here.
Mr. Winarski. Chairman Horton.
Here. Are there any citizens from the public designed to be heard? Here in person or online? Are there any citizens from the public who desire to be heard here in person or online? Are there any citizens to be heard here in person or online? Hearing or seeing none, I'll call for approval of the minutes and motion to entertain the most before the approval of the minutes. So, we probably move this seconded by Council Scatella, seconded by Council Cote.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of amendments here. First one, I move to amend the resolution on the L and A watcher code of conduct by making the following change. I want to replace the words watcher and watchers with the words observer and observers. Upon further discussion with the solicitor and clerk of elections, it was decided that the word observer should be used so it is not to be confused with the term watcher. Someone should second this motion, please.
It's been properly moved, need a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Councilman Drexel is seconded by Council Cote. We entertaining both those motions.
Out of line.
We have to do separately.
We need to do a vote on the minutes also.
Yes. Yes, let's backtrack a little bit and when we do, we'll entertain a vote. A motion for the approval of the minutes, but can we, is it all right as we handle these two motions in one vote? I don't see the reason why we should be.
As long as the record reflects it, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, so is it all right if that be the, sure, all right, but I ask. So, I'll call for, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting in February thirteenth.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Mrs. Shourman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Chairman Horton.
Yes. I'll repeat myself. Okay, so.
I'm going to read the second.
Our, our. We had a first and second for those, but we didn't read the second. Would you read the second as we'll handle it to the one?
Okay, I move to amend the resolution on the, on extending the deadline to register to vote by making the following changes. In the sixth and ninth, whereas clauses change the word sheriff's department to sheriff's office. And strike the paragraph beginning with therefore be it resolved. And replace with the following paragraph. Therefore be it resolved by the county of Erie Board of Elections pursuant to the Home Rule Charter, Article One, Section Two, the Pennsylvania Election Code and the Order of Court dated March eighth, twenty twenty four, a copy of which is attached hereto and incorporated herein. The deadline for the last day to register to vote in the county of Erie for the twenty twenty four primary election shall be extended one day from April eighth, twenty twenty four to April ninth, twenty twenty four is hereby recommended to council by the Erie County Board of Elections. At the time the agenda was published, we did not have a court order to reference, and this language has since been provided by our solicitor.
Any discussion will now have their goals. Seeing none will handle both of them. I expect the record to reflect that, please. Call for the question.
I have Mr. Drexel made motion and Mr. Copeland seconded.
Yes.
For the second.
Moving them both forward in one motion.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Mrs. Shourman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Chairman Horton.
Yes.
So we did a first and a second on a C. And we did a first on an. We go into second on an.
We moved on.
And then we then together.
If that be the order of the.
I'm just asking because we did a first and a second.
I know that I asked our turn instead, as long as the record reflected. I asked her to let the record reflect, but I'm comfortable with it. Good. So, under new business, I imply. I made it. Okay, we have a resolution to approve the extension of the voting registration date night, date due to the solar eclipse date. I have a lot of questions pertaining to the date or the move of itself, but are there any questions pertaining to what happens here at the eclipse before we move this forward? So I'll entertain a motion.
So. Motion to accept the resolution.
Motion to accept the resolution to approve the extension of our deadline to vote from April eighth to April ninth.
As amended.
Is there an amendment?
Yeah, that's, so A is one of the amendment. A and C.
Okay, this is the amendment. Because I don't see it.
No, that's what I just read out, yeah.
You amended one would be sideways in your packet. And then it would be the highlighted area would be the part that's changed on your other.
Okay, so, so to Ellen's point, as a living, as in line with this. I entertain that motion.
Second.
Because we just voted to use them to do them as one motion. On the last. In the hand.
Well, you did, you voted on the amendment.
Right.
And you're voting for the resolution itself.
Right. It's been properly moved as a second.
Very nice.
Very second. Call for the question.
Mrs. Shourman, yes. Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. Drexel.
Yes.
Chairman Horton.
Yes. I don't believe entertaining the, entertaining a motion to approve the contract. This resolution moved forward to approve the contract between Erie County Software Corporation doing business at S C Y T.
So.
Second.
It's properly moved and seconded by Councilwoman Shourman, seconded by Councilman Scatella. Offer the, any discussion?
Mr. Chair. I just want to bring this to the attention of the board. Most agreements, not all agreements such as this, usually call for, would usually give each party the right to terminate thirty days, sixty days, ninety days without cause. This is a three-year agreement. It could be renewed every three years. But the, the only way that the county could get out of this is if they are terminated, I should say, is for cause. And the reasons for cause are listed in the contract itself. I believe that the, that, that tightens this contract amidst the county for a minimum of three years regardless of the quality of the work performed, or other contracts may pop up by other companies that might be available. And so I would suggest that we amend the paragraph eight point three of the agreement to eliminate that paragraph. And type instead. This agreement may be terminated by either party. By one party giving the other party thirty calendar days prior written notice of their intention to terminate. If, if the board is comfortable with a three-year agreement that you're locked into pretty much, then I don't have any recommendations. On the other hand, if you want the flexibility to renew this contract in a year or terminate it if you don't care for the contractor under this paragraph, then I would suggest you recommend that we amend it with the language that I just gave.
If I could speak to that a little bit, we did speak with other companies before deciding on this company. This is probably the most well-known, highly regarded company that offers this service. And we did, like, we did investigate other options. The cost is about the same for either company. There's only really two big companies that are offering this software. It's not something that our internal IT department would be able to provide for us. So given that there's two companies, this one has an upfront cost because there's a setup cost. The first year is about, it's between fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars, and then the second and third year is about seventy-five hundred each year. So even with that stipulation in the contract, we have at the front end, a higher expense to buy into this. We talked to other counties that have used this software. It's the one that they're more comfortable with and has a better reputation. So that's, that's kind of where we're at, but then why we're at this point.
And, and that may very well be, I have no reason to think other ones is probably is the best company, but remember we're not putting it out to bid. And that's the only construct that I have. You're not going to be able to put this out to bid for three years if you sign the contract as is.
Thoughts?
There's no cost savings, so now that three is the same you said.
The other company that we looked at is about two hundred dollars a year less. However, the service agreement is not clear, and there may be hidden costs associated with that as well. So in the end, I'm going to say it looks like we're about even. The other company, it's divided about ten thousand each year. So it's overall, it's, it would be, it's not a three-year contract. I believe it's a one-year contract, but it's about the same amount when you spend it over the three years. But again, there may be other costs that we're not aware of. It doesn't spell it out quite the same way.
Well, then on eight point one, how would you want that submitted?
Eight point one, I had, I addressed eight point three.
Well, the eight point one says shall be valid and remain in full force and effect for a few years.
Yeah, well, the three-year agreement is fine. It's, it's just a way, it's important to have a way out.
So the eight point one doesn't need to.
No. Because it is a three-year contract.
Right, but I didn't know if something happens and.
Yeah. Yeah, most contracts are written like that because you don't anticipate something happening. But usually there is a way out because sometimes things aren't funded, especially for government contracts. So it's good to have.
I just didn't know if eight, if eight point three was changed, if eight point one had to be changed as well.
I understand. Do we, we're also not, you know, now that I hear the price of this, it's really not that expensive, right? How much are we talking?
First year about fifteen thousand, second year seventy-five, third year seventy-five. That's.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yes, seventy-five hundred. So overall, and that's about the same as ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand. You give, you know, those a hundred dollars here and there, but roughly that's where we're at.
That's beautiful.
Yeah. I like the, the idea of giving ourselves some freedom thereby, you know, potentially amending it, but do we have any reason to believe that the company providing the service would be agreeable to that change?
Did I say no? But I haven't dealt with them.
So I guess the question is if we were to amend, approve, and send it back to them. They say, they say, no, does this just become, does this just come up on our agenda again in a month or so, or?
Well, and this is election reporting software, so we will.
Not much. Yeah, that's, that's my concern. Like, I, I like the idea of bending the contract, but if they just say no, was this service not going to be available to us for the primary? That, that's a concern.
You would have to know who the negotiators of the contract offer if they were. I mean, there's a lot of questions you have that has to determine. I don't want to jam things up. It's, it's only total fifty, thirty thousand, not a very large contract. The idea though being that council has to start bidding. It hasn't been bidding things very much for the last couple of years, and sooner or later it's going to have to start doing that. But otherwise, again, it's a small contract. There's not, there's probably not more than one or two or three contractors out there if the bidding process was conducted. So they sound like they're another dominion, but there's not many contracts out there that are, that are up to date with the election code requirements.
Okay, I'll say this. I like the way, I, I like most of our leases with our magisterial district start structured that way. So that's kind of been standard operating around here, but with that said, I know that most of this stuff is going to be proprietary, and it sounds like our staff did their due diligence checking with these two other outfits. Just based on the information she supplied here. If it was a, if it was a bigger, I think in, in time wasn't other assets, I would have absolutely hammered down for that. In fact, I still would like to ask them that, or if they tell us no, if it goes, that will come back in the contract. But I'm always on the side of, of, and how to hold up the vote, I think that I would entertain a motion to amend it according to our solicitors thing, and then we vote to approve the contract. Wait, see. Come back and say it in three years.
Oh, there had to be a motion in the second to the amendment.
Right.
If not, then it's voted on.
Right. So I would entertain, I mean, that's my thought, I'm going vote. I, I think is I would, I would vote for the amendment. And then pass the resolution, I vote to amend, and then I would vote to approve the contract. As a minute. I think companies like this would really like, I don't think it's a big deal because it's such a big, a small contract. What do you, what say you? Sorry.
That's okay.
Why?
What did they say their timeframe was as far as setup needing to be done because the elections, we want that done away.
It would probably take a couple of weeks to set it up. I think we need, what we've heard back, because we did have, I had Tonya, our director of elections, put this out on the listserv. So we're hearing back from other election directors and people throughout the state and talking to counties who already use this. It looks like anywhere between ten and thirty hours of maybe data entry and trying to navigate the software. There will be a little bit of lead time, and we're already having other election work going on, so. If we want it before the primary, you need to do it. Otherwise, if you want to take your time with it and negotiate, we can do that and try it out in, in the general. It would be kind of nice to have a run through before the, the general election.
I think a phone call and some coordination could probably iron it out. In the event, basically saying, yeah, we're going to pay you this, we'll pay you, we're going to do this to you for three years. But in the event, I haven't burned whatever like that she just pulled out thirty days or thirty days. Whatever the language was. I, I personally don't see anything. We still awarded them the contract unless by the process, unless it fundamentally changes the contract. You know, they may say so many, there's so confident, they're worth it, so, you know. I don't entertain any motion you all put forward, as, as is, or as, or as amended. Got to do something, no?
I'm going to accept it as it is. I don't really think that, I mean, it's not a large sum of money, and I, I think having that run through in primaries is, is important to, to, to make sure people are, feel that our election process is incredible process, and we're doing it more than one spot, doing it primarily, doing it in a job.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we have first and second. Is there a discussion? There you go, Chris. I cut you off before we have to discuss you, but I give points to you, Tom.
I, I think it's important to have a primary and a general as well, and you're not sure we can get get it done if we don't fix that good on seems.
I agree, something new.
For the general.
If you had no complaints from any counties about it.
I think there can be a learning curve, but I think, you know, we only have two elections a year, so if we get this now or we get this in the fall and we have a learning curve, I think a contract that's three years long is terrible for these kind of learning curves. I think it was generally positive. We looked at other counties' websites that use the software. We had a demonstration from this company, and you all saw part of the other company. Think that they, they've been on hand for service issues or questions when people are learning. We also have our IT department who can help us if there's any, you know, they can help if we don't understand the language or something that, that they're speaking with. We did work with the IT department on, is this something that they can, they could help us on if we need?
So again, we're kind of indifferent, but I like options, but the motion before us is not the option. We already have a motion. Unless there's any this further discussion or a call for a question.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shourman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. I don't see. So should I take, take the word watcher and put a verb in here? I don't see resolution to approve the logic and accuracy observer code contract. As a member.
So.
Second.
It's been properly moved, it's seconded by Council, Ms. Shourman, seconded by Councilman Scatella. Any discussion? Call for the question.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mrs. Shourman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Chairman Horton?
Yes. And then last but not least, a rule of April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, general primary ballot. It's properly moved, the second.
Second.
It's been properly moved, the second. By Councilwoman Shourman and Councilperson Scatella. Any discussion on the ballot? The colleagues from our clerk board. The comics from our election director.
Yeah, so we have been proofing the information that's on ballots for a couple of weeks now. We'll continue to prove things as we move forward. The only things that could affect the ballot are a couple of candidates. We have Joe Von Barca was removed from the ballot. He hasn't appealed that decision yet, and he has until the eighteenth to do so. And then William Parker was also removed from the ballot, and he has appealed, but there, the court date hasn't been set yet. So there are a couple of things that could change the ballots that are out of our plans at this point, but we do have logic and accuracy testing scheduled for next, next week beginning on the eighteenth, so it's kind of a waiting game. But we also need to get mail ballots out.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, the training. I've got some emails from somebody, a couple of people, a few people saying that they're a team and they're no longer getting paid to do training that old person, that's their position at the precinct? You know, if it's the judge or whatever, how do you guys don't train? Who's, who's no longer getting annual, I mean, continual training? I think they get trained once. They want to get paid more than once, it sounds like.
It's the clerks. So the clerks, basically, they handle the books and they sign you in whenever you come in. They've never been trained. We do invite, it's, it's open if they want to come, but we don't send the, the initial invite. They call the office and say they want to schedule. We'll schedule them, no problem.
So it's not a problem if they're getting training at all because if it's pay issue, does that come up? Because I don't want to inject anything in it, but it kind of was like, but why can't we not? I go, I go right to the money.
It wouldn't be a problem to train clerks, but that would be, we probably need, it's limited space down in the Bay Area. We already have a week of training.
Yeah, I just need to be able to send them someplace for the answer days.
I'm on me.
Yeah. Thank you. Last but not least, it's not on your agenda. I know that we have a we've been going through some litigation with Miss Craven, and I think maybe we have another hearing scheduled for the hearing.
There's a march, I believe there's a public hearing on the twenty-sixth.
On March twenty-sixth? I'm sorry, Karen, I didn't get this stuff before. It's supposed to be March twenty-sixth. It's important.
I don't have the information in front of me for that.
That's rich.
Rich.
Yeah, yeah. So listen, when that information comes, y'all don't have to be there, but I do like to share information so that y'all have the same. It's a, you know, it's moving into the thing, it's all centered on the pictures from the mailbox and hopefully we'll get some resolution. Eventually, get it resolved, chair of this next. I suspect that this is going all over the state, which is blessed to have her.
Mr. Chair, I think this particular hearing is about really the same issues dragged on for quite a long time, and it really has nothing to do with getting information. But everything to do. But everything to do with. Whether the G county acted appropriately or not. It's providing access to film um. The video that was taken at the outside drop box. So we'll be sending them the complicated questions.
These have been conversations that we've been having. In other venues and I kind of feel like maybe we shouldn't.
Think you're right.
On that.
It's public record.
It is, it is at this point, it's public record because.
Yeah, of course it is. Yeah, there's no uh. There's no, we're not talking strategy or facts that it's gone over. This is the third time we're hearing the same issue. It's been prolonged unfortunately by Miss Cravitt. And in some cases by the court that hasn't, you know, cut through with my stuff. It's extraneous and got to the point. That anyway, it's um it's simply more of the same has been going on, same subject. And I suspect that the right to know cases are going to go down or drop uh in light of Commonwealth Court case decision that came out last week. Uh that finally defined. The system that we have. And are using. Namely, the scanning of the handwritten uh vote. Uh into the machine. And then the machine tabulating it as being defined as a voter machine. Uh that's always been the big issue for the long, for the last two years. Especially ever since. Everybody was required to produce a paper ballot. And that was in light of the twenty twenty. So in order to do that, the county converted as well, like all of the counties throughout the Commonwealth. But the question that has been haunting everybody, the great to know. Questions have been always trying to get access. To the electronic information. Behind the ballot. And the answer with all of the board of elections throughout the state has tried not to answer that or has refused. To provide the information, arguing that the electronical. Uh information that they're seeking is no different. Than the hard information that you would normally find in the machine. So the argument has been, hey, it's it's out of the machine now, it's out of the voting box. And that's not a voting machine anyway. So give us the information. And the Commonwealth Court said, you're not allowed to be information. Because the electronic, because the electronic information is simply the equivalent of the contents of the physical hardware ballot box. And so that really. Puts a huge damper on all of these right to know requests that were asking for twenty twenty information, like the twenty twenty election information, the twenty twenty two. Election information going back to the beginning as far as wanting the contents of the document.
I have to go back and see that court case, but uh thank you, council, at the point I I really just kind of made. I always take information into, is that on March twenty sixth, uh will be continued with this. Judge Regis. And if you are able to. It's really kind of more of a.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Tony. Uh Tanya, why were the two candidates removed from ballot?
Um I'm sorry, I don't have that information. It happened at the state level.
Oh, at the state level?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they were both candidates for U S Senate.
They were for U S Senate?
Mm hmm.
Okay, alright, so you wouldn't know that then.
No, I'm sorry.
Alright, it's probably insufficient signatures or something.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh unless there's anything else for this.
Do you have a motion to accept the ballot?
This was the discussion part. We already voted on.
We did vote on the.
This is discussion, we had the motion and the discussion, right?
I have a motion from Mrs. Showerman, a second from Mr. Scatella.
Call for the question.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Drexel?
Yes.
Mrs. Showerman, yeah, Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Uh Chairman Horton?
Yes.
No, that was just, it was confusing with the amendments and stuff and all the different. We started to, yeah, blend everything together, so I just want to make sure.
Well, good, because I did, because you lost me on. Uh this is, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say thank you to you guys again for all the work you've been ready for this.
Thank you, Alan.
I'll entertain a motion for Germany.
So move.
Uh me, the chair. Don't go too far.
Yeah, I probably get that.
I do want to.